Okay. This is the Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018 Board Meeting. The Board of Education has been in closed session since 6:00. For the items listed on the agenda, we have six Board members present, one absent. And at this point, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The Board of Education will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. And the timer goes for three minutes, and there's a beep, and we ask that you wrap up when you're finished. So at this time, Ina?
Yes.
So you can come up to the podium and turn on the microphone, please.
Hello, my name is Ina Yunyu. Thank you so much for giving me this time to speak. I'm one of the data leads, one of the group leads for Elmhurst for Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense. And recently, we were apprised of a situation in Naperville where they were, the school board in Naperville was asked to support a specific resolution that is going to be raised at the upcoming November conference for the Illinois Association of School Boards. And there was a press, press conference about it, and the Naperville School Board ultimately decided that they would not be supporting specifically a resolution called Resolution Number Two. And Resolution Number Two is asking the IASB to support arming teachers in schools, allowing them to have concealed carry licenses, training these teachers to get these concealed carry licenses, and then having them potentially with weapons in elementary schools and upwards. So Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense has, I believe, sent a couple emails to members of some of the school board. And I'm here today to specifically request that when your representative who goes to this IASB conference will vote no on Resolution Number Two, specifically that they won't support anything that would allow teachers to be armed in our schools. There is lots of data to show that children do not wish to have weapons near them, that they are fearful, that they already feel unsafe, and we don't want to have these weapons in our schools at all. So Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense of Elmhurst is strongly advocating that you vote no, and that the person who's going to this conference is armed with this knowledge. Are there any questions?
So we typically don't respond at this time, but typically, the Board replies via email, or will reach out separately.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I believe that's all the public comment. Okay. So we will move on to approval of Board meeting minutes. First are the approval of the September 25th, 2018, and October 9th, 2018 minutes. Are there any changes, or anything? All right, then those stand as presented. Second are the approval of September 25th, 2018, and October 9th, 2018 closed session minutes, and those will stand as presented. Moving on to the Superintendent's Agenda, Consent Agenda. First, does anyone want to remove any items?
Okay. No, then I will ask for a motion for the Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
I move that we approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda action items. I'm sorry. Superintendent's Agenda Consent Agenda, items A through D.
Could you just read briefly what they are?
I'm sorry. Item A, Personnel Report. Item B, Financial Reports. Item C, Approval to Extend the Contract with EZ Tech Connect for Services of Interim Technology Manager. D, Approval of New High School Courses.
My second.
Go ahead.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes. Next, we have the Superintendent's Agenda action items. Item A, Approval of Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Elmhurst. There will be no action on that, taken, no action taken tonight on that. So we will move right to item B, Student Residency Determination.
I move that the Board of Education approve the hearing officer's findings that student A is not a resident of the school district because said student does not and has not been residing within the school's district attendance, boundaries on a regular fixed basis since at least the beginning of the 2018-2019 school year. As a result, I further move that student A be disenrolled effective the end of the school day on October 26, 2018, and that tuition be charged from the first day of the 2018-2019 school term through the date of disenrollment in the amount of $3,954.54.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No. Go ahead.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. The motion passes. Item C, Approval of the Paid Access to Transportation Pilot Program and Student Fee Schedule.
This was discussed at a recent Finance Committee meeting, and it was also discussed with the full Board at the last Board meeting. So if there is a motion and a second, and any request for further discussion, I will then defer that to Chris to clarify any points people would wish to have clarified.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Paid Access to Transportation, PAT, Pilot Program, and approve the Transportation Fee Schedule.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
The Paid Access to Transportation is a pilot program just at our three middle schools, and this is for students that live within 1.5 miles. And there is an existing bus route, an existing bus stop, and there is space available on the bus. And the fee schedule that we're recommending is for, it's really just going to be for the, from November to the end of the school year, $250 for the, for that period, for a round trip, $250. If it's just one ride per day, it'd be $125 a day, $125 for the year.
Erin?
So Chris, this is a pilot program at the end of the year, or toward the end of the year, you're going to do an assessment, survey, how'd it go? Should we continue this for upcoming year? What's the plan?
Yes, that's correct.
And just to reiterate from the last Board meeting, we're not changing any bus routes, we're not adding any stops, we're adding $0 cost, we're taking seats we're already paying for, and actually generating some revenue to put in the classroom. One. And then, two, in helping parents that need. And two, Chris, you had said something, you had set a fee of $250 and $125 in the motion, or in the, in the agenda here, it's got to scale over time. And I just wanted to clarify, because I know there had been some discussion about just setting a flat fee from an administrative standpoint, and how we want to address that in your recommendation.
Correct. We're, the, the Board Agenda has a prorated schedule, where we're not going to do the proration for December, and January, and February, and March, April, May. We're just going to do the one fee from, from November to the end of the school year.
Update the information, because that's a, right? We need to modify, right?
So, so you can amend the motion, if you want to do that.
I'm going to stretch my parliamentary skills here. I recommend, I move that we amend the motion currently pending to remove all the line items except the top line item, November to the end of school year?
What about December? Somebody joins in December, or January, February, it's still the same fee, so it's not?
And the fee, no matter when it?
Yeah, the fee's just $250 and $125, so it's just a set fee with no time.
All right. I've got a, let me say that again. I move to amend the motion such that only the top two fees be charged for student transportation, regardless of when it starts, lasting through the end of the year. Got it?
Just for clarity, $250 if you're going round trip, $125 if you're going one way. That's, that's the impact of what we're, I'll resecond.
That's the intention of the amendment.
For the rest of the year, right. So I will, I will resecond the amendment.
So John amended the motion. Okay, so we've got a vote on the amendment, correct? All right. So that's what we're going to do, vote on the amendment.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. So now, we need to vote on the amended motion. Any more discussion? Okay.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes. All right. Next is the Approval of Medical and Dental Insurance Contract.
So, yeah, I was just going to say, I'm going to defer to Chris, because he can give you the specifics, even though a lot of that is in some of the rationale, but generally speaking, good news.
Correct. And we have Renee Formel here from Alliant to talk about our renewal for calendar year Dave, can you put the insurance document up?
Okay. Thank you.
It says Elmhurst CUSD 205, 2019.
Okay, well, good evening. Again, my name is Renee Formel, and I'm with Alliant. I'm here today to talk about how we develop the program cost for the year of 2019. As already announced, we have very good news to share. The trends that the district has been seeing has been well better than the marketplace. So the rates that will be pulled up are called your conventional rates. Each year, we have to look at the enrollment in your four medical programs, as well as your dental program, look at the conventional rates that represent the plan cost, and true them up. What you will see is on the PPO program, and when I say PPO program, I mean your traditional PPO, as well as your HSA PPO plan. These two programs are underwritten as one program, and you will see that we are receiving a 1.85% decrease in overall program cost. Now, when you get into the factors that come into developing these COBRA conventional rates, what we've seen in terms of your claims, they have decreased by 2.4, I'm sorry, increased by 2.4% from last year. So a slight change, but the trend that we're seeing overall is typically an 8% trend. So you're trending well below that. Something that has also helped the renewal this year, the fixed costs. You have premiums that you paid to Blue Cross Blue Shield to be the third-party administrator, as well as you have a specific policy. When you pay claims as a district, you do not pay them indefinitely. You'll pay them up to $160,000 per plan member, whether that's an employee, spouse, or dependent child. You pay a premium for having that stop-loss insurance. All of these programs combined, reduced by 8% this year. So the combination of a lower trend rate, and the reduction in your fixed cost, is what yielded the 1.85% change in rates. To let you know, when we look at your claims, and we trend them forward in a projection, we applied approximately a 7.8% medical trend, and a 12.4% prescription drug trend. So assuming that type of increase to the claims, and then balancing them against your enrollment, your current conventional rates, they changed by the 1.85%. In terms of the HMO world, HMO, your claims ran higher than the PPO. They ran at a 16% increase from last year. But in an HMO environment, when we look at your HMO program, when I talk about claims, it's only inpatient hospital and prescription drug. Those are the actual claims that the district pays on behalf of the programs. Then you have another cost called capitation. And that is where you send fixed dollars to your third-party administrator, Blue Cross. And with those dollars, they pay for all of the professional services, anything that happens outside of the hospital, therapies, surgeries, on an outpatient basis. And what we saw for your capitation was a 7% decrease. So that capitation's about 40% of your claim cost. And then in terms of fixed, you had a very good year in what they charge for stop-loss. You pay claims on that inpatient and prescription up to $80,000 per member. You pay administration fees to Blue Cross, and that changed by almost 1% of a decrease. So the combination of those factors allowed your HMO program to renew at a 0.35% decrease. So since I've met you guys, I've come in at a good time, your claims have been running very well. You're self-funded, this is the reason that you self-fund, so that you're not paying when claims are running well. You take on the risk, you have the full transparency, and years where you're running better than trend, you're going to pay something lower than trend. In terms of dental, dental's very vanilla. You never have large claimants in the dental world. Your dental has been trending lower than what is an 8% trend. And when we plug in your current enrollment into the dental program, we look at your claims and we trend them, you actually required a 2.15% decrease to the dental program. So it is, I believe, the recommendation to propose to renew with Blue Cross Blue Shield as your third-party administrator, with your current four medical programs and the dental program, at the projected decrease in program cost.
Do you want to do a motion and then discuss, or ask? Well, what I was going to say, or ask any questions? No questions? All right. I guess that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So now a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the renewal of Blue Cross Blue Shield Health and Dental Insurance Plans for the January 1st to December 31st, 2019 year, as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes. Next is Approval of Donations to Emerson and Sandberg.
So the first one with Emerson is $2,395 toward online educational subscriptions. This is a program that Learning and Teaching had decided for various reasons not to support. It looked at some usage trends and some curriculum considerations, but there are some teachers in the district that have utilized this, and so what we have agreed to do, if the schools want to fund this for teachers, because it's important to them and their schools, we are going to recommend approval, pending the outcome of some further analysis of the Technology Committee for different types of online resources, open resources, and other types of curriculum resources that will come through the work of that committee. The second one is a Sandberg donation of $1,100 for a water bottle filling station to replace one that has, is dated and not working well anymore. So those are the two that are recommended this evening.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation from the Emerson PTA in the amount of $2,395 for online educational subscriptions, and from the Sandberg PTA in the amount of $1,100 to purchase a water bottle filling station. These donations are accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I wanted to thank the Sandberg PTA for replenishing, or providing the new water filling stations. I know that the kids like them. Thanks.
And I would like to thank the Emerson PTA as well. We are, again, fortunate to have a generous group of parents that, that volunteer their time and treasure. Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes. Next is Superintendent's Communication, the Fall Housing Report.
So every year in October, we give you an updated enrollment report that includes updated projections, and so Chris typically handles that, and he will, again, this evening. So I'm just going to turn it over to him.
Okay, the first, the thing on the screen, I was just comparing last year's projections that we did, and we use the October projections for staffing purposes for the following year, and then we also do five years to kind of see, see a trend. And in this, in this document, you can see that the last year's forecast to this year's actual was off 43 students, but mostly was off at the kindergarten level, which, which we always talk about, the kindergarten is, and early childhood are the most challenging to project. So, and then also in this document, you can see that the middle school grades are down 3.01% from, so actual to actual are down 59 students from last year to this year. So then, as far as the projections are concerned, Dave, if you want to put up the other document. Yeah, go ahead.
Asking one question on this, I know, I understand kindergarten's really hard. It's, you seem like the first three years, you know, minus 31, plus 20, minus 19, and then it all smoothes out into single digits. Is, I mean, I was just curious about what's going on between kindergarten, first and second grade. Do we see a lot of in and out during that period, it would seem? I mean, and just trends, I think, on the other ones, too. It's just, it does seem to be, all three of those seem to be difficult.
Well, the lowest grades are the most difficult. I mean, kindergarten is obviously a half, half-day program. So, so the kindergarten, then, to first grade, there's variations in the survival ratio, depending on how many, I mean, I think the big factor is that we have students that don't go to kindergarten here, the survival ratio is like 120% at some buildings.
Sure.
Because, because students come in from, from private, private kindergarten programs.
It seems like you have similar volatility going into second grade, and then from second into third grade. So I, it might not be anything, it may just be the data that I'm looking at. I was just curious, because the rest of them seem to be a lot closer.
Yeah, the, the lower grades are the hardest to project. I think you get more of a consistent pattern on the survival ratio as you move up the grades.
Jim?
As far as our projections for kindergarten entrance, how many years ago was that study done?
2014.
Okay. Thank you.
But, but I could talk about that a little more, Dave, if you could go to the projections, and then go on down to the second page. So the Fisher here, Fisher Kindergarten, you'll see, is 84 this year compared to past kindergarten classes of 69, 65, 72. Those are, this is the dual-language program. And the little red numbers I wrote, that was from the demographic study where, where the demographer had put in kindergarten at 65, 64, 63, 62, 63. Those, that was, so that, the difference there is now the new dual-language program. So you'll also see that, that Fisher is now projected to increase in enrollment each year, and that's related to the dual-language program. Then, okay?
Jim?
So, you know, that, that 18, 19 student difference, do we see that reduction in the other grade schools?
You would, you would, yes, I guess that, it's definitely coming from the other.
Right. So it's just a matter of, you know, going where the program, transferring to where the program is.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, I guess, on the bottom of this page, I just was pointing out that Emerson this year is at 442, where five years ago, it was at 527. So the Emerson has gone down. It's, a lot of these, a lot of the elementaries are projecting stable enrollments, but I was just pointing out that Emerson is down from five years ago. was just pointing out that Emerson is down from five years ago. Then if you go to the next page, on top there, Field, I'm pointing out that the demographer, I think we had a lot of discussion when, in 2014, about the new development in that area. And so the kindergarten class was projected in the mid-lowest 70s, and it hasn't panned out yet to this point. So I had used these 57, 58 numbers steadily increasing a little bit just as, just because we, it hasn't panned out yet. But that's yet to be determined, and kindergarten's hard to project anyway, but I wanted to point that out.
Okay.
It's not scientific.
I understand that. So to Jim's point, so four years ago, or you said 2014 was the last time we had a demography study.
That's correct.
That was pre-Bertow development. So are you saying that, I know, and we said five years, we need to do another study, would the demographer's study then help us clearly identify the projections of the Bertow property and the students that would be coming to our school at Field?
Well, a demographic study takes a lot more into consideration where these internal enrollment projections only, I mean, we use the old demographer's study for the kindergarten, and then we just use the cohort survival method for using historical survival ratio trends in order to project out students. So where the demographer will look at census and age and all the different things, I mean, I think the biggest thing is in-migration, out-migration patterns. And so the demographer will look into a lot more, and we'll have a much more accurate estimate for kindergarten when we hire a new demographer at some point.
I had a, no, hopefully not. Oh, how many of the 56 homes are occupied? Do you have that information?
I don't. I think it's getting, last I checked, and that was a few months back, we were at 45.
Me and my dog confirm that.
Then if you keep going down here, Hawthorne, you see in 17, 18 was 492 compared to 13, 14 at 587, but we're, it's looking more stable, but it's down from five years ago. Jackson, Jackson's got three large classes that are going through that are, you know, they're not in line with what the demographer had said, where the demographer was estimating kindergarten classes at 49, and those three classes were 69, 67, 73. They were really scaring me as far as capacity at Jackson, but they're moving, they're going to move through, and that if, if they truly are just kind of an anomaly, then, and we still get more kindergarten classes like we have the last two years, then it'll relieve some stress there, but yet to be seen what happens there in that area. But I just wanted to point out that trend that happened at Jackson with those three large classes. Keep going. Jefferson's stable, Lincoln's stable. Then when you go to the middle schools, Bryan's got a large eighth-grade class there, 248. Churchville's got a small sixth-grade class at 155, but a large seventh-grade class at 200. Really, the middle schools peaked in 2015, 16, and so then we're experiencing some enrollment reductions, particularly at Churchville. And Sandberg that I'm pointing out here, Churchville down 35 students this year, 15 next year, 37 the following year. And Sandberg is kind of on a steady, steady decreases there at Sandberg, where we were at 749 back in 15, 16, 670 this year, and some more, a few more decreases to come. So the middle schools were experiencing a high point in 15, 16. Now they have been going down for a few years, and that lower enrollment at the middle schools will eventually hit York. So then if you go to the next page, where York, you're seeing York down a little bit in the out-years. So that's it as far as the enrollment projections.
Karen?
So Chris, I know it's difficult to know the enrollment or project them for early childhood, but if you look at it, I know that there's only five increase from last year to this year, nine previous year to last year, but then for two years it was 20. And I know that, what, after the tour last night, that they were saying that they have to say no to some fee-based students based on the increased number of students that are coming into early childhood. What can we do to understand what that need is there?
Well, I would say this, Kathy, and you can feel free to jump in. There is a protocol for state screening, and if kids reach a certain age and having to take kids, we have a blended program, and that's what you're referring to with fee-based. So there are some students in there that have some specialized needs, and then there are other students in there that we take as space permits. But the issue is that we can only, we're really at capacity in that building. We, there's, we can't really put any more students in there. So Kathy, if you want to add to that, feel free.
Yes. So as students turn three, we work with the early intervention, and of course, aggressive child find in our community to find students, because we know the importance of early intervention. So if a student is eligible for services, we have to take them at their third birthday, or at least make that option available. And for some of our students with more significant needs, they are there a full day. It's a small number, but that's, that space then only houses, right now, there's about eight or nine students, which is about max because of the significance of the needs. The other blended classrooms, as Dr. Moyer referred to, they can go up, but the state does cap them at 15 for an early, for a blended early childhood program. So I happen to glance at the numbers again for the end of September, and a lot of those classrooms are already sitting at 13 and 14. So we can't open those up for tuition-based students, because we need to save those spaces, because we'll take students as the year progresses as they turn three.
Jim?
Chris, back to kindergarten. When do you anticipate that we would commission another demographic study? You know, as Chris and I were talking, you know, birth rates are highly correlated to economic conditions, and, you know, we've, we're living that dip right now from kids born in 2012, 2013. It does not surprise me there was a dip in the live birth rate during those years, but as the economy gets better, I would expect that live birth rate to go up. And from John walking his dog, I'm hoping he's going to count the number of strollers in that neighborhood. There are lots, yeah. And, yeah. And, you know, there are a lot of strollers around town, so it wouldn't surprise me if our kindergarten enrollment starts to go up again in the next couple of years. When do you anticipate that we'd hire another demographic study?
Well, I, of course, since I do the internal enrollment projections, I'd rather have a professional, you know, to test my internal projections against, and obviously updating the kindergarten helps, you know, me to do the annual enrollment projections. But we could talk about it at the next Finance Committee meeting to determine a plan for when to do another study.
That's fair.
I just want to set expectations, too. When we did the last one, we didn't find anybody that was willing to tell you that they had a high degree of precision at the building level. Right? I mean, I think on the whole, these have been pretty close. At the individual building levels, it comes to more, you know, kind of Chris's art than the science of the demographer. So, and unfortunately, that's kind of at the margin where our costs are. But just so everybody understands, I mean, we can bring somebody in, but nobody's got a crystal ball when you get to the building level.
All right.
So I would just add to that, that every year around this time, then, when we are able to have our fall housing, I update people on class size. So I put a memo in your packet or in your board, attached to your agenda related to class size. So the average class size is, at the elementary grade level, this refers strictly to elementary, is 22.5 students. We have class size targets of 25 in grades K through 2, 27 in grades 3 through 5. And so what I did is I broke down, in addition to the average class size, the percentage of classes, depending on if the target was 25 or 27, I took the numbers of 23 in grades K through 2 and 25 in grades 3 through 5. And so 72.2% of our classes in grades K through 2 have 23 or less students, 64.5% of our classes in grades 3 through 5 have 25 or less students. The number of total classes in the district, so if our target is 25, the number of total classes in the district that have 26 or more students in grades K through 2 is 1. And then actually, on my table, I did the same thing. The number of classes in the district that have 28 or more students, which I did not put in the table, I apologize for that, at grades 3 through 5 is 4. And so, and all four of those are at Hawthorne. And so they would be scheduled, if this plan is advanced, to have those class, some class size relief at Hawthorne. But other than that, very few of our classes exceed our targets, and our average class size, as I said, is 22.5, and the vast majority of our classes are actually below our targets. So that is just kind of an overview synopsis of class sizes it relates. And the point of that is that we are staffing the way we've always staffed, and we do try to keep class sizes low, particularly at the elementary grade level. But as we have some discrepancies in the size of, or the total enrollment at some of our attendance centers, there are times when we get some odd sections where it's difficult to truly get, you know, right at that perfect target number. But we do do our best in that regard, and I think that's a pretty good example of that. So just added that to the packet. And that's all we have, I think, on that particular topic.
Any other discussion on that? All right.
For the next item, the Board asks the administration to take a look at establishing a process to deal with change in the district. So if we do have some type of new program or some type of different direction we would like to move in a certain area of our operations, we wanted to have some type of a framework that we would use to organize the process and identify who's responsible for the different components of the process, and who are the appropriate people to be involved in the process. And so Mary Ann Lemke and Bev Redman supported this effort a lot. I thank them. But they identified some different models that are out there. And one of the big things then, in addition to the model itself, is to try to have an ongoing communication process associated with the work that's being done, so that we can regularly keep people informed as to our progress and where we stand at any point in time. And so that's what I've enclosed, and I'm recommending, this is not, doesn't have to be a static document by any means. We can revise it at any time as we try it and see how it works. But I would recommend that we give this a shot and start applying this to some of our work, and then we can see if it's meeting our needs. And if it's not, we can take a look at what we'd like to do to revise it.
Karen?
So you and the Cabinet have worked on this, the ETC President Wright and the District Leadership Team, which is representatives from the schools across the district?
Yes. So what we did is, we, when we identified this, we asked for feedback from our principals, and we asked for some input from the District Leadership Team, which does have representatives from every building in the district. And the feedback from the DLT was actually very positive. They thought that this would be extremely helpful, and in fact, they said that, they thought it would be particularly helpful for the teachers, and they would like us to start using this right away, even for some of the things that are already in progress, to help us organize and communicate the work. So the feedback that we got on this, we did vet it through some different channels, and it has been positive so far.
So this sounds like there's three components. One is kind of highlighting what's the change, who's impacted, what's the cost, et cetera. But then the implementation plan, which is that is really, you know, who's affected, who needs to know, you know, what do they need to know, right? And then, of course, the communication plan, which is like letting people know ahead of time or be in the process from the very beginning through to the end.
Correct. It helps identify responsible parties to keep some measure of accountability, and progress toward goal attainment, and your deadlines, and those types of things are built into the action planning process. And so, yes, I would say that, I'd say that breaking that down into those three areas probably would be a good way to make sense of what we were trying to do.
So first, I just appreciate that you've already worked with, you know, like the leadership team and Cabinet and gotten input from principals, but I think we, I would like to put it on the calendar that sometime in the summer, we revisit this to just see how it worked, and so that it is a document that can be bettered along the way, if possible.
Sure. I think that makes perfect sense, because, you know, it's meant to be a resource to help us, and as we learn about, you know, the extent to which it's meeting our needs, we can, you know, examine it as we go along. And if you have things you would like to see as we're doing reports and including information, you know, we can take that into account, or if we find different things that we think we would like to see different, just to help the work, improve our ability to do the work. I mean, you know, I think we can, I think that this can be very easily adapted to different situations. It's not a, you know, there's nothing magical about it, other than it's just a tool.
Thank you for that. Next is the York final exam exemption.
Okay. So on this one, the High School Administration approached me in the summer about wanting a final exam exemption, and I had said that I would support that. I had been involved in that work in other districts, and so I said that would be fine. They wanted to try to get that off the ground in terms of communication with the faculty this fall, and they had done, if you recall, a previous presentation, some work to get input from their faculty and get some input and ideas. And then after they got that, I sat down with the High School Administration, and we came up with what we thought would make some sense based on our goals of trying to keep seniors engaged in school their last semester of school. We didn't want the learning to stop. We didn't want people to shut down if they had been, you know, the you know, whether it's the behavior issues, whether it's the attendance issues, if they had been already accepted to a school, or if they were going to, not sure what they wanted to do or something to that effect, where sometimes you get the senior things kicking. We wanted to keep them engaged and motivated and keep the learning moving along. And so, we presented that to the Board, and the Board had some feedback for us, and we took that into account, and we presented that at a Learning and Teaching Committee meeting. And, you know, I will admit that there were some elements of communication and some things that went on in that process that were not probably as clean as I would have preferred, so I apologize for that. But when that was discussed at the Learning and Teaching Committee meeting, some of the elements of it changed somewhat significantly from the original concept. And so, I had asked the Board to give us some time to go back with the high school administration and make sure that that was actually something that they thought would serve the purposes. And so, what came out of that Learning and Teaching Committee meeting, they took a look at, and what you see here is the revised recommendation of what they think would take into account their perspective, as well as some of the input that came from the Board members. And so, that's what's on the agenda tonight for discussion. It's not, it's not something that needs to be formally approved, per se, but it's something that we would like to have Board consensus on before we move forward, just because we know that this is something that could be, you know, highly public or something that involve a lot of, you know, parental opinions one way or another, and we didn't want to get ahead of the Board on this.
Jim?
I'm 100% behind this proposal. Anything we can do to take some stress off of our high school kids, I am all for. And I also understand that you want to provide some incentives for the right behavior the last semester of senior year. And I have no problem with anything except for the number on the total absences. You know, it's kind of a random number. The state draws the line at 10 and then calls you truant. I know the high school, the Learning and Teaching Committee had proposed 8, and now the proposal is 5. You know, I can see a lot of scenarios where 5 absences aren't all that many in one class. By the time you add up the times that a kid is sick or misses school for an appointment or misses for a college visit or whatever may happen, 5 can happen pretty quickly. What I don't want to see is those kids so motivated that they do not want to take final exams, which I think is a very motivational thing, showing up at school sick because they don't want to stay home because they don't want to take final exams. And since this is the first year, kind of an experiment, I would feel more comfortable if we pushed that number upwards, and if that does not result in the behavior that the high school's looking for, that we come back after this first year and reconsider another number. I mean, I'd be much more supportive of a number that's 8 or 10 than 5.
Would you support a sliding scale where the number of absences is associated with whether or not they have a C or better in the course?
I mean, that makes it more complex, but you're saying, the better you're doing in the class, the more you can miss, because clearly, you've, you know, the better you're doing, you've mastered the material, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. What I'm saying is, I don't want to discourage kids from taking a rigorous program of study that better prepares them for college because they're motivated to, you know, have an easy schedule and not have to take exams. I think we have a lot of students that fall into all kinds of buckets, from the ones who are very bright and can show up and take a test by accident, to the ones that maybe have some specialized health concerns, and, you know, to the kids that maybe you are trying to engage just to keep them tuned in, to the ones that are trying really hard and showing up and doing their work, and they may be on the fringe of a class and taking that, you know, the stress of them having to try to get a C or whatever, not to take the final exam. I don't know that their learning significantly increases by having to take that final exam because they have a 68% instead of a 71 or whatever. So, that's where I'm saying the sliding scale gives kids kind of multiple pathways, perhaps.
Yeah. I favor anything that we, I like that train of thought. I just favor anything that takes some pressure off of these kids. I mean, you know, one end of the spectrum of kids, the week before finals, they're taking, you know, 3, 4, or 5 AP exams, and they're studying like crazy. And if they have 4 absences in a class, and they want to take maybe a few classes off because it means college money to them by getting a high score on an AP exam, so they want to miss some classes to study for that AP exam, and then they can't do it, I think we're disadvantaging that kid. So, you know, that's, that's the way I look at it.
John?
I'm just curious, why the choice of total absences as opposed to unexcused absences? I mean, some of Jim's ideas are addressed with the idea of unlimited, or unlimited excused absence, if you're sick, if you're visiting college, things like that.
I'm not 100% sure how that changed. I had to miss that Learning and Teaching Committee meeting, but the original proposal had some number like 3 or less. It had an unexcused provision in it, and then, and I think some discussion was, well, some parents will call their kids off, or some, you know, some other kids wouldn't or whatever, let's just have a straight number. Was there something to that effect that came into the conversation?
Yes. It was expressed that there are parents that'll call their kid into the attendance line and give them an excused absence regularly, and other parents who have a different idea and refuse to do that for their kids. So, they do not want to disadvantage the kids whose parents say, you know, you're going to school no matter what.
The other question is, of these four bullet points, one kind of sticks out as different than the others, parking violations. We're using final exams to leverage parking examinations, seems a little unusual.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to leverage behavior for, and the parking situation at York gets significantly worse in the spring. There are all kinds of parking spaces that get invented in that parking lot, and it's, it provides, you know, safety concerns, and we have limited ability to police it. And Chris, I know that you looked into this with Drew over there, but we would have to come up with a contract with our own towing company or something like that because the police won't do anything because it's our lot, so they won't issue tickets. We'd have to tow people, is that basically what it is, or?
Well, we talked to other districts who do have towing contracts, and it just, school districts generally don't tow the vehicles because they're our own kids, and so we generally don't. So, it sounded like, from talking to the other districts, it really wasn't something worth pursuing, and the towing companies don't really want a contract with you unless you're going to enforce it and have the vehicles towed.
So, okay, there are two things. Then, there's final exams, and we don't want to use towing, but it just seems a little different to be using final exams. At the very least, it doesn't seem a very efficient way to leverage parking behavior, but, you know, it's a pilot, let's see how it goes.
So, I have a question. Do you have to have the grade and the absence thing, or can those be two, kind of, or, you know? So, if you're getting an A and you miss six times, six days of school, are you still, you know, or is that part of your sliding scale?
Well, that's what I was kind of suggesting, that the Board wanted to see a C average in there, and we put it in there. And so, you know, if we kept this provision and said, if you have a C and have 8 or less absences, you know, we could maybe keep that as one provision, and if you are passing your class but below a C and maybe have, you know, 3 or less absences or, you know, something like that, you still, you still have, you know, and, you know, 2 or less missing assignments or something like that, you still have an opportunity to, you know, qualify for an exemption.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. I mean, a kid that's struggling in the class demonstrates a lot of initiative by at least showing up, right?
Well, the thing is, if they, let's say they know they're going to pass the class anyway, but they hate the class, they're not going to get a C, or, you know, or whatever the case is, at least they're in school, learning to some degree, doing their work to some semblance of effort, you know?
That's the other side of that, and that's a good way to look at it.
Okay. Any, anything else? Do you have anything? No? So, do we want them to come back to us? Are you gonna, or, what's the next step?
Well, the next step is we just announced the, we, well, we finalized it in writing, and then we communicated to the students and the families, and then we would try it this year and see if we want to adjust any of the criteria, see how it works. And then, it is probably something then that we would want to do in time for next year's handbook, which they, you know, I'm not sure what the exact deadline is for publishing that, but it's sometime in June, I think. So, that's actually in the handbook going forward, but we would just, we would just communicate it out so that everybody knows, you know, prior to the start of second semester that this is in place.
Karen?
So, I mean, I noticed that you used some of the change proposal, right, outlining everything, and then, you know, what I wrote down is implementation plan and the communication plan. You hit the communication plan, that you have to communicate it to staff, students, parents, but even the implementation plan, it's, okay, so we have to make sure that, you know, whatever the process is for staff to get the grades in, right, at a certain time, it's well enough in advance, you have it here, but somehow, how are we coordinating? If the sliding scale, how is that happening? You know, is it happening through the system, is somebody manually doing, you know what I mean? All that will have to be put in the implementation plan and then communicated out.
Correct. And so, you know, Mark, actually, the first time we actually used this, just to play around with it, was the last time we presented this, so I think he just updated the form. So, we didn't, we don't have the whole thing, you know, filled out, but we could certainly use that as one of the things we use this year for the rest of the year to just kind of see how the form works. But I do agree, there would be, you know, part of that implementation plan would be then, you know, an analysis that we would have some information to see if we want to make provisions.
That seems reasonable to, you know, send us, send the Board an email and what that sliding scale or any other changes looks like, and then, you know, get our feedback, announce it to the community, and then, you know, come back in, at the June meeting and ask the high school administration, you know, to give us a quick report on how they think it worked and what their suggested changes would be.
I'll make sure there's a few more numbers in that report, too. Promise.
I just asked for reconsideration of the zero parking tolerance. Zero tolerance in parking and a tolerance of 5 on class attendance. That seems a little...
You're saying if your car is illegally parked and you're not in class, is that like a double? I'm kidding.
We'll put up with 5 absences, and we'll put up with only no parking?
All right. Anything else? Okay, so we'll wait for communication, and we'll plan to revisit it then in June after you pilot it. And now, we're on to Freedom of Information Act requests.
Okay, so, we have, it says 4, but there's only 3, that's a typo, 3 Freedom of Information Act requests, 2 requesting certain doc, oh, maybe it is 4, 2 requesting certain documents related to the facility's master plan, one was granted, one was denied, 1 requesting specific employee information, which was granted, 1 requesting specific invoice information, which was granted. And that's all I have, except for our Tweet of the Week.
All right. Well, one of the fun things that we get to do in the Communications Department is to follow up and see the great things happening in our classrooms, thanks to our teachers who are on social media. And the Tweet of the Week goes to our, one of our instructional coaches, Pia Bartelay. She captured some great work going on at Jefferson, and the tweet says, "First grade acceleration group with @MsMinn, @JeffersonD205, working on high-frequency words in an engaging way." And of course, it includes our wonderful hashtag, #IgniteD205. So, congratulations to Pia for being out there and doing some reporting on the great things going on in our classrooms.
I just wanted to say thank you to our principals. I know none of them are here tonight, but, oh, there, oh, there's one Lincoln principal, so thank you. It's Principal Appreciation Month, and we've all tried to reach out to our liaison school principal, but also just to say thank you for all they do. They are in charge of a lot of kids, and they look over, oversee a lot of teachers and families that come to them, and so, we just want to say thank you, and you're appreciated. We notice your leadership and what you're doing for the district. So, thank you, and hopefully, you've all heard from us at some point, and if not, this is a reminder that you will. Are there any other Board communications? All right, so, we have 3 scheduled upcoming meetings. Regular meeting on Tuesday, November 13th, Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here in District 205 Center. Tuesday, November 27th, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, 7:30, District 205 Center. And Tuesday, December 18th, Board of Education meeting, 7:30 here in District 205 Center. If there is nothing else, then I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.